I'd like to welcome everybody to our town council work session meeting of Tuesday, September the 5th, 7 o'clock here at the Town Hall Conference Room. Town staff related issues, number one is going to be the CHA presentation of the Route 522 corridor water update reliability, upgrade reliability. Okay, I'll give that to you in a minute.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, uh, CDJ is here again today to give an update on the 522 corridor upgrade reliability. We're getting indications from Dominion that if we don't act, they're going to pull back that money, that they're going to contribute, that three and a half million. So with that in thought, we've asked Steve Steele, the CHA, to come here, talk about the project some more and see what the council's directions are. I think we're almost at a point now that if we don't react soon, Dominion is going to...
And that's up to $3 million.
Three and a half million.
Yes. And this is a redundancy that we do absolutely need in that corridor.
Uh, well, I'll let Mr. Steele take over from here, but we did in March present to council the four different options and unfortunate, not fortunately, Dominion Resources only said one option was viable to them, that they would support for their three and a half million.
Is that what we're going to concentrate on tonight?
That's what we're going to concentrate on tonight, what that financial impact will be.
Then another year or two, we can add on and load it together.
Right. Well, I'll let Steve take it from here.
Okay. Appreciate you guys having me again. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time rehashing everything that we went over in that last council meeting. Nothing has really changed from that time as far as why the project is being proposed, the interest that Dominion has and the redundancy, why they would actually be willing to pay three and a half million dollars.
When was the last time you were here? We have some new council members, we want to make sure that they're up to speed.
Okay.
Gary's the only one.
Okay, we can... I can, I can do a pretty quick...
Okay. If you don't mind, just kind of give us, because I want all the council members to make sure that they're on board with what we're doing.
Okay.
Please.
Yes, sir. So the agreement with Dominion Power says that they'll pay up to $3.5 million dollars or 75% of the project cost to create a looping redundant water line to their facility. They are a facility that absolutely cannot operate without water. So if there's a line break anywhere on Shenandoah or any of the line under both river crossings and Jimmy and his guys are stuck trying to get equipment down there and it's down for three days, once the million gallons of water runs out on that end of the 522 corridor, everybody in that area is going to be out of water. So while running something that doesn't depend on water may not be as critical for Dominion, it absolutely is a game ender if that would happen. So hence, they internally decided it was worth turning out a million dollars to them because when they're down for a day, I think it looks like a million dollar revenue in the 24 hours. So that's, that's a pretty short, that's a pretty small investment for them to make sure that they've got two lines under the river, two lines from the water treatment plant to that 522 corridor.
But if I could just inject a little bit, that was part of our negotiations with providing water, was that three and a half million dollar upgrade that they were...
That one...
Pretty much, and I guess Doug could, could check on that, but when we were negotiating water with them, that was part of the deal.
Okay.
I have heard many times over the past four, five, six, eight months that the money may evaporate, which we don't want, and I don't know if that could really happen because it is an obligation with the contract that we had, but I don't know how tight that contract would be.
Yeah, I'll stick to my engineering professional and let the attorneys do that at that point. So that's kind of the background of the project. We, we did look at multiple options and I will go over those in part for, for new council. But in general, what was going to be cheaper and perhaps considered to be the better option was additional storage in lieu, in the form of a larger storage tank there close by to the existing one being gone. Our evaluation of that from an engineering standpoint is it still only bought them a couple of hours of time. So the money spent, whether it was two and a half, three million dollars for the tank, that to get you two hours of extra time is just not the best bang for the town's dollar. In addition, whether that is, is found to be something that was in the contract or not, Dominion has stated in email to Mr. Walts and myself that the only option that they would invest their three and a half million dollars in is a parallel line, that a tank would not, in their opinion, meet the requirement of a redundant water source from the town system. So again, I stepped back from that, attorneys and town manager can wade through whether that's actually a legal requirement, I'm not certain, but from an engineering standpoint, it makes sense that the redundant line is, is the best option for all folks. The overall project at this time is five and a half million and I don't want to try to give myself some wiggle room, but every month, year, and season that goes by, this number's going to start moving on us. As these storms keep hitting pipe reserve locations and foundries and things that are this number, I can't tell you this time next year, it's not going to be inflated another two or 300,000 dollars. So I think it's, from the consulting standpoint, I have to make council aware that, that the longer we wait, the more this, this target moves, the more the three and a half million may move. The urgency from my standpoint is knowing this industry, I am your consultant, I need to warn you that this is, we need to try to move in some direction at some point to get off center and I'll, I'll explain what my recommendations are moving forward, good bad or other, based on the town's desire, and you put some closure on some things so that we can move in a positive direction, whatever that direction is. Then there, we did some initial modeling. This is actually coming at an opportune time because we were, were in negotiation with, with Mike Kizner to get a modeling scope for the entire town water system, redo all the mapping, do flow testing, get it calibrated so that it absolutely tells you what is actually happening in the water system. We don't have that right now, we've kind of piecemealing it together and it leaves the town open to some, some criticality issues that you may not be aware of, that sneak up on us. But the goal of that study is to not only understand what things may need to be improved from the water treatment plant out to the bridge, but as expansion of housing, industrial and commercial development based on comp plan, land use, what do you need to be ready to be doing to your infrastructure to be in the best place to provide the demands that are coming 10, 15, 20, 30 years down the road? And so Mike's idea is that we put together a long-term CIP plan for the water system that encompasses the 522 corridor, any development that would be coming on the outskirts that the county would be requesting, so that you don't get caught in a position where somebody says, "We've been negotiating for six months, got a great business coming in here, going to create jobs and revenue, as long as the town can get a $4 million dollar line built up to us in the next three months, everybody's good." That's not going to work for anybody. So we need to get ahead of that, let you guys be putting money back each year, packing away at the things so that you're reactive to have the system ready to expand as it needs to and not, or proactive, not reactive at the last minute. And so, all that being said, this is a good time because there's already money in the budget that you guys approved to do the hydraulic modeling, which is critical to answer some of the questions that Mr. Tewald and some of the other council folks may have about true redundancies and phasing of a line all the way back to the water treatment plant and things of that nature that we talked about in the last council. So I may have said I could do that quickly, but I don't know how quickly I can do that. So is there any other questions about the, the project in general and what we're trying to achieve? So this is the executive summary, just going to hit the high spots. The reason, the goal was to maximize volume of supply if one of the transformation names fail, minimize the users impacted when this scenario happens, and keep adequate pressure so that we don't, we don't break any VDH rules, we don't have cross contamination, we don't have low pressure that suck water into water lines and require ball notices and keep you guys in full compliance. And these are the options that we looked at, a parallel line was an option, connection to an alternative portion of the town's distribution system, adding a tank, and then adding a tank and upgrading distribution plant. So in the end, the parallel line ended up being what hit the most metrics and won out as far as the best option to meet all of those goals. So right now, this existing condition, from, from this point forward, and this is a 12-inch line, this section is already a point of contention because it goes from 12 to 6, back to 12. So when we connect, it's going to be right there. So we're going to take that out of the, that's something in the back of my mind that has been worrying me all along, even with the correct sizing and Guard Hill Pump Station, push 2.1 NGD, this, this smaller diameter section could cause problems later pulling pressures down because the suction side, we can't get enough water through that small portion. So this would, with this would fix that problem. There's also, you can see the one line, this four inch, I don't really know how that came to be, somebody's spent an awful lot of money pushing a four inch line.
What are you talking about?
The...
It, it is 12 through there.
Okay.
So it's all 12.
Okay. All right.
There's six of them, there's one else down the street.
Okay. Okay. So...
Sorry about that.
So this, the parallel line, and I'll show it in a second, would pretty much be parallel all the way up, we're going to connect a couple of places here so that we have the full redundancy. I want to talk a little bit about another possible option to make it look more redundant, an existence, existing system hydraulic redundancy. So very rightly so, Mr. Tewald had a very good question the last meeting. Can I remind it not to start installing updates?
I'm a little confused. Mr. Mayor, I'd request that me personally get an opportunity to go with whoever, so I can fully understand the pumping station, the certification of the water going to them. I need that education before I really make it.
You understand, Doug, he would like to have somebody take it from A to Z and that can be set up, somebody.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with doing it, I know the last council meeting you had asked and...
I mean, it's hard to make, you know, a logical decision. I'm sitting here looking at this thing and I understand the single line going out, I understand hydraulics. What I don't understand is where is the pumping station, where is the water being supplied to that single line going out? That's where you start, where your supply point is.
All right, so hopefully this next exhibit is a much larger blow up. So this is the, this is the existing infrastructure, we've got the, the major storage, these are huge 14-inch lines, these orange and purple, but this is the life line pretty much from treatment plant, wraps around all the way down Shenandoah to this smaller, and then from this point, we're going under the river twice, and this is the only line that you have. The green is what?
It's the six, the six inch line.
That's a six inch there.
The, the purple is the raw water and the orange one, well, the 24 and the 14 are both raw water lines.
Just running some progress.
Right there.
They're asking about this line.
Yeah, okay.
Then this quarter six inch goes in, it's not there no more, it's between the double bridges.
No worries, the six inch is on the right side, Shenandoah.
Yeah. Up there by, has Speedway and everything, that's where that is. It used to be a six there, it's still on the right side, so it's tied into 12 on the left side going out of town.
Sir, help me understand, that blue line is a 12 inch, then you see a green, that's six inch, then back to 12?
Mm-hmm.
So that's the section you're talking about?
But that's actually...
So where is the actual pumping station to supply that 12-inch line?
Guard Hill Road and Route 522.
Right there, it's at the water plant that feeds to there.
It's a crackhead down.
Show me where the water plant is, I don't...
That's, that's two tanks here at the bottom.
Okay.
Right now, that feeds out to that...
That 12-inch line goes all the way, all the way through there, there's no, there's a six inch in there.
That's what we're saying, that's my, there's a 12 inch there, it's 12 and a six there on that part of the road.
Well, that should be all blue.
It is, it looks like it's covered up.
And that's part of what we would be updating with the modeling and mapping update because we, we know there's some things in here that we need to verify and mapping tight so that we can actually do hydraulics and have things like this get cleaned up before we do anything crazy and find later that...
This is something the planning department had to help out with the presentation, the mapping part of it.
In Shenandoah, you've got 12 on the, there's 12 walking through, you've got the six inch on the, I guess the east, east side of Shenandoah. But Mr. Tealock, if you, I'd be more glad to take you anytime and show, show you what, to give you an understanding of what you have.
Sounds like it should be sooner than later.
Okay.
I'll go with you, Doug.
So the question at the last council meeting, which was a good question, was if, even if we start the double line, redundant line here, what makes anything about the existing system redundant if there's a break here or here or here in that large line? And that, that's a good, good, good question.
That's what I'm asking.
And so there were some folks that said, "Well, do we need to build this parallel line all the way back to the water treatment plant?" And the reason I blew this up, you can see that if this line goes down right here, you've still got a networking of piping made up of four, six, and eight inch lines that connect into that 12 in multiple locations down Shenandoah.
And still feeding past that break.
Correct. So Jimmy would come in, he would, he would isolate that section and turn it off, be working on it, but all of these, I call them capillary veins that go around that would still feed that line while this break happened. So you're still meeting the intent of what you're trying to do without trying to weave a whole nother line all the way back through town to the water treatment plant. What you guys talked about making that phase two, I think that's absolutely worth us looking at to see if we can do some looping in here and create some more robust alternatives so that this blue line's not the only one that gets to this connection point, but we make some connections so we can actually color in another line that says, "Okay, there's a second one." Okay? There's a third one. And we call those out and with Jimmy's maddening, he knows, "All right, here are my main veins into the double line we just spent two million dollars on." I need to keep that in mind where breaks happen, that my isolation plan still allows one or more of those ranges.
You're not going from just point A to point B, you're going from point A to point C with a lot of, a lot of different avenues.
All these, I mean, this, all these are interconnected. So you've got a spaghetti of arteries all culminating at that point right there. And so the concern was, from a hydraulic standpoint, if we're still depending on this to never break, then redundancy stops right there. But from a hydraulic standpoint, this can still break and you have all of these other lines that are feeding to this one point, so this, this is not a game ender for you. And from a financial standpoint, as much networking as you have right now, making a couple of key connections like there and some of these other spots would be much more financially acceptable than having to try to weave a fully redundant line back through...
So the actual start point to reconnect out on Shenandoah would be where?
Right.
What intersection? Are we looking at?
Just past 17th Street.
Eight, be, eighteen, eighteen Street.
Okay.
Now, I think the next question, which I'll be ready to show is absolutely the next step, I need to get the mapping tightened up with staff and come in here and show actual flow calculations that I can tell you how many different networking of pipes are needed to equal what can flow through that line if it breaks. And then, just as everything else, there's going to be some level of risk. Taxpayers are not willing to pay for the biggest house that will never, ever have anything go wrong, you've got to go right up where you feel like you've done the best you can to provide a system that's reasonable, that doesn't break the bank, and then have your risks known and have a plan to mediate those if they come up. I mean, that's, that's the challenge we have in the municipal world. In a perfect world, we can pound down through here with three more lines and it'd be great and say, "We're going to raise taxes $20 a month, everybody here doesn't keep voting in next time and I don't have a job." So those scenarios work out for me especially, so... Does that kind of, and I know, Mr. Tewald, the next thing I need to do is be able to show, put my money where my mouth is and come in here and say, "This line can provide two million gallons a day of flow." I put a big X, it broke, it breaks right here. Now, that same two million gallons of flow is going past that break through this line, this line, whatever that's happening, when I can stand up here and tell you guys that that's a real thing, I hope that that mediates your concern to spend money building another parallel line all the way back through town. And I think...
You have to convince them, yeah.
Okay.
Because I don't think that's a 12-inch line all the way through.
Well, that's, this...
I tell you, you go out and verify because I don't remember I'd ever been a 12-inch line, but down through there and then out to Shenandoah.
Yeah, they got 12.
And then we got 12 on that next to Shenandoah because I put it in, back this way, I don't think it's 12.
Well, this, this...
I think it's a 10 or smaller.
This is step one, because understanding this has got to be absolutely...
I understand.
...ironclad before I can stand up here and tell you guys.
So I don't ever remember a 12-inch line down Kerflet Avenue that you showed on.
Right.
But I might say it isn't, but I don't think it is.
That is, that is.
So there, there's kind of the concern and the next steps moving forward need to be verification of some of those things. This is the, the project, you can see there's that connection point at 18th Street, it's redundant line, we loop here, so now you've got this line and this line, if there's a break there, you can go right around it, if there's a break here, you can go right around that. This is the section that I'm, I'm not 100% convinced, and I know that moving it over here, parallel the railroad, it makes more sense from a redundancy standpoint because these two are laying right on top of each other. If a bomb hits right there, a tanker truck blows up, anywhere I've got these lines right beside each other, if I can get them further apart, it makes me feel better that it's a true redundant location. But there's a spur line, the spur railroad runs up into this facility and this, moving this redundant piece over here would, would have us punching under that spur railroad. That's more money, that's more time on permitting standpoint, maybe if we can get these, one on one side of the road, one on the other, and that distance is far enough apart...
We'll have to punch on the road, get it on the other side.
Right. So we need to, I mean, that, when my eye sees that, I see all this, okay, it looks like parallel, parallel, that catches my eye, but this should be here. Then you would have redundant, redundant, we split here, parallel all the way into Fairground Road, parallel all the way in, looks to be even more redundant.
I guess at this point, we're looking at that, that water line for section two as it is.
Right.
Because, like you said, taxpayers are expecting us to do as little as possible.
And I don't know what the even...
I mean, the three and a half million dollars from one source is great, but then we're going to have 30,000 old people that are going to count in the town sharing with the water usage, 100,000, 2 million.
So this is just some other information available to you guys, this is the Dominion Power estimated demand, and there's somewhere, let's see, there's about 1.5 million gallons, no, 5 million gallons a month. They're, they're in the early stages of this right now. So when it, when it jumps, and that says 27.6, but when it goes, when it even doubles at this point, then...
We need to be ready.
We need to be ready. I'm not telling you can't get what you need through the line you've got, but when it breaks, if you don't have a redundant line, this means that they're in trouble that much faster, twice as fast, they're, they're starting to lose.
Do you have a ton of day's storage tank on the site?
Nah, eight or nine million gallons on site. Now, they are days, they pull 400,000 gallons a day, not every day, but they're days when they pull a half million gallons a day.
And there probably needs to be some discussion on the planning to kind of shore this in so that we're in sync with what they're doing, if there's any other developments planned by the county to, to increase the usage on that corridor. From a planning standpoint, it would be very helpful to understand so that we're not spending more than we should, further than we should, but we don't wait so late that we have to try to catch up.
I mean, the, the corridor is the focus point with buildings, we've got a couple of projects going on now, and I'm sure there's going to be future projects that are going into the corridor, not just the corridor here also, but...
So this just shows that possibility to move this section over here, again, we can take, if we can take a look at that from a property acquisition standpoint, from what the railroad would require here, they're going to put us through the same rigorous permitting process they would for a live line, it is crushing. And the permit, they just sent a bill that says we want 30,000 bucks, and it doesn't matter whether it's a 40-foot bore or 240-foot.
Steve, just bringing up now so everybody can hear, we actually have a sewer easement in front of Dupont, right where that is. We started going behind there, it's not Dupont now, but in the front of that building, that we can get you a map of that.
Okay.
It would be huge because if we got an easement running through there, it might help out with, you know, getting the properties.
Yeah, depending on how that easement was worded by the attorneys at the time, if it says sewer only.
I think it says sewer only.
Okay, then we can, we'd have to read.
I mean, it might be worth looking at, because that would save, you know, running backs and forth.
I mean, now's the time to be hammering these details out, not once we're way down the river. So that's just something I wanted to get out of here. So this is the, the other reason that I was asked to come back, so I worked with BJ on trying to figure out how to kind of start getting the council's head around what we're looking at from a financial standpoint. And so this outlines what your existing rate schedule looks like. Based on the project cost now, it would be three and a half million dollars provided by Dominion, 2 million provided by the town. We've assumed...
How many years?
Ten.
Ten years.
We've assumed a pretty aggressive payback schedule, so you guys don't want to be financially handcuffed for very long. So a payback period, 10 years, I've had, for the last three years, that's pretty much what I've been able to get you through VRA, DMLVACO, any of those bond issuance markets or even banks, they're, they're holding this. Again, storms and new presidents and everything always shake things up, this has been a pretty good average in the, in the municipal world. So that's what additional money has to be generated, pay the two million dollars back over 10 years, a year, 224,000 dollars a year. So I just did a couple of things, and these are absolutely just shots across the bow to start the conversation, this is not final, there's all kinds of scenarios and options, but in a nutshell, just doing the, the quick calculation, your in-town connections, there's 57, 163 in-town connections that pay the in-town revenue. They generate about 2.7 million dollars of revenue per year. So I broke that down, and what that equates to is an average monthly bill of around $39 for water. Now, you're going to have a handful that pay a lot less than that because they don't use as much water, you're going to have a handful that pay a lot more. But just to try to get us inside the room, I'm just trying to use a point of reference to get a start. Based on that, revenue generated by those customers, if everybody carried the increase equally, that's in-town, out-of-town, and Dominion Power, because Dominion Power's out-of-town, but they pay in-town... out-of-town, but they pay in-town rates-
Five years.
Okay. And I don't, I, I'm assuming that that's in perpetuity, so that could also be thrown into this mix, and we can show a cash flow analysis that five years down the road, this generation by them of five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars a year goes up.
Hollis, are you saying five years from now, they're not-
The contract read five years, Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, it read five years, single water rate, and then the next five years up to ten years, the county is going to subsidize the other half of their water bill.
I'm really not sure that was written before I came in.
I believe it, and say it's incremental. After five years, it goes up so much, then another five years, it goes up so much.
Okay, and so, in, when we get down into the weeds and you guys give me some direction on how you want to do this, we'll do year eighteen, nineteen, twenty, one twenty-two, and show where that additional money drops in.
Dominion's been there two years?
Yeah.
It goes along with my experience, and I've been originally, your new project team, breaking out, so you know.
Yeah, I did some way, as best I could.
And there may be other CIP projects that are coming off, that free up money to go here, and then this isn't the only revenue generation, because you freed up some money somewhere else that can be dropped into other CIPs.
So, that scenario, with this money, it's, it's a user fee, it's not a tax.
Correct.
So, this is when you flip that switch and run that water.
That's right. And this assumes that the users that are in the system now, no growth, no additional water sales, that they carry the full cost of paying back two million dollars intended-
And I'm thinking this would be something we could put a sunset clause on, after ten years, kind of the project, Joe.
Yeah, I'm assuming that. The only, the only concern I have with that is if you have a three percent inflation every year for ten years, is your sunset clause already met and exceeded. I guess you're talking about being able to back rates off.
How often do we do rate studies? Five years?
Normally, typically, they're done three to five years. We have money appropriated in this year's budget-
For a-
-to a full rate study of water and sewer, due to the issues we had last year with the inconsistency from, particularly Dominion.
I mean, this is great information to have, to work with. I mean, we have a lot of different targets moving, and council's been discussing this for years. Gene Hall has been, eight, ten, fifteen years, you know, and, and, and we're at the cusp where we can actually move on this, because we definitely don't want to lose that three and a half million dollars, because then the water user's going to be paying a whole lot more, so.
And when I-
I don't think you're going to lose more than that. If they, they go down for more than a day, there's going to be a payback for the town to reimburse them.
Very well.
It's likely. Doug, you would know more about that, I'm sure we're in that liability, so somewhere.
But this, when I start trying to calculate how these folks are funding the mix with Dominion and your five hundred, ever five thousand seven hundred and sixty-three, those four hundred and seven agreements are all different, all over the map, different assumptions are made, there are different rate structures, and so, that's going to be something that, this needs to be broken down to say ten, pay this rate structure, five, pay this one, three, pay this one, one, because it's the only one you can give into town, pays this one, but they only pay it for five years, and then it goes to less the next ten. And this is going to be broken way down before you can, we can fairly say that we're spreading this out the way that it should for everybody to carry the load. Now, we do a lot of projects where it's not, even-
Well, Joe, that's pretty much a true statement, because over the years, the council has made certain deals with certain industries out there, so, yeah.
And I mean, this, just to, to give you a feel for what the impact is, if, if you wanted one of these groups to pay the entire two hun, two million back, if you put the shouldering on the five thousand seven hundred and sixty-three in-town, they would have to pay an eight point three two percent increase for the next ten years. If Dominion had to pay it by theirself, they would pay a forty percent increase for ten years. If the out-of-town, just on an average, they're at eighteen, one, nine, four. So, what, what that does, it kind of gives you an idea of where you get, the lower the percentage, you're able to generate much more money with a smaller increase to that group, just because of the volume. So, if you try to shelter your in-town five thousand seven hundred connections and have them pay less, these smaller numbers are going to have to pay a lot more to make up the difference.
Well, your in-town is supplemented by your out-of-town, so it would be foolish to just put the burden on certain sections.
Right.
I think the overall one hundred, and that's just my opinion, the overall one hundred percent of the water users share the cost.
And that just needs, we need to, I need to be able to show you on paper that we've captured that, and it's fair, and that people are paying a fair fee for clean water.
And I guess to summarize this, this, this whole work session, we need to move forward with this, Joe, we need to get some traction. We really, I think council should, should agree that, we've been talking about it, we've been lucky, we've only had one break in the line that was under the creek. That was probably-
Fifteen years ago, Jimmy.
Yeah, it took a couple of days to dilute it, because we were in the flood, water was rising.
So, that segues into something I like to come away from the meeting with some direction on how to help you guys go towards the finish line in some, in some rounds. So, as I spoke before, I don't think that anybody's going to feel comfortable pulling the trigger on two million dollars until I can tell you that the mapping has been verified. There is a twelve inch here or there's not, there's a section here that's gone, but all that needs to be verified, and we need to be able to do modeling to show that you're not wasting money on a parallel line and have a line in-town break, and then we still can't get water to the two million dollars worth of line that you guys spent. That, in my opinion, as an engineer, is, is number one. If I can convince council that we are already in a situation where you don't need to spend a bunch of more money in the existing system, then the very next step, we've done a report, we've done memos, I've done these presentations for you, none of this planning has been put in front of Virginia Department of Health for approval to move forward with design and construction. So, keeping everything on a timeline for you guys to understand, this is probably a two to three month or more process by itself. This could be a two to three month process by itself. You start looking at those things that we've got to do before we even hit permitting, that could be forty-five to sixty days just for stream crossings. Every, we're, we're a year or more out from even having a piece of equipment on property dating a trench, if we drop the hammer and, and move on some of this stuff right now. So, my concern is that we have a plan-
What do you want from council tonight?
I need council to give me direction. Is this absolutely the critical path that is going to have to be hurdled before we do any other spending of money?
John, your opinion?
My opinion, no. Again, I'm not an engineer.
Your answer is no, what?
No, I don't need the existing, like, the additional follow-up report on the hydraulics. I want to get moving now.
Let's move forward now, yeah, okay. You catch that, he wants to move forward.
Yes.
Okay, Chris, can I get your thoughts?
I'm fine with moving forward, I'm just curious, why are they paying three point five million and not more?
I don't know. It was part of the contract. It was something negotiated in the contract that they were going to support seventy-five percent up to three and a half million.
Not only the three and a half million, and we'll get into it later.
They also, they also put about a half million in upgrades to the sewer and water pump station up there as well.
It was a contract when it was built.
So, what happens to them if it doesn't get built?
I don't know. I know three, three and a half million probably goes back to the accountants to reappropriate to something else in the Dominion huge engine, and they set, they probably have some attorneys send something over that say, now that we've branched this fork, here's what's going to happen if the line breaks and we lose money. I'm, again, drifting into the attorney's beta week, but my guess is, if they have shown due, if they've provided an, an option to pay seventy-five percent of the costs, and then it just doesn't happen, then I guess they're going to cover themselves and say, "We did all we could." I, I don't know how that would go.
Sure. Derek, can we get your thoughts?
I'd like to move forward, still want some verification.
Bill?
I'm intrigued with, the mapping's got to happen at some point. We've already got it in the budget, so why, you know, why isn't it happening?
That is first, contracts first come forward, hopefully, somebody told me maybe next, next Monday, however, myself and Steve are out of town. But yes, that is, there's a contract in place for approval from the council, if they'd like to move forward with the hydraulic model.
It'd be, it's, it's been in motion, it's coming forward.
Right, yeah, it should be for council approval, the contract for that services. Hopefully, if not, just coming up Monday, two weeks from now.
Well, we've got a real liability, is the way I'm looking at this, not only from the town citizen's point, the map you just showed, you've got fourteen inch and a twelve inch coming from your supply point. I'm wondering why we don't have a backup plan and project. It might be long range, tapping in a fourteen to get to those twelve in a loop. That ought to be in there somewhere, that ought to be in our long-range planning.
Well, what you're going to approve, the scope is just that, it's a fifty-year, long-term CIP plan. And the way that Mike and I set it up, there's two different CIP plans within your CIP overall plan. There's one that is just flat out, I see deficiencies and depreciation in pipe. Right now, you need to do X, Y, and Z, because you're at the precipice of a failure that's going to cause you some problems. So, that's getting your existing system back in good shape. The next set of CIP is driven by where your growth is going to occur, and how significant that growth will be in residential, commercial, and industrial. And so, you're going to have a plan that says, "Okay, if this area that's in the land use plan for high-density residential, whatever amount of acres that is, it may be none, it may be a lot, if that builds out full, then we have to replace three thousand feet of line to be able to feed that." And so, we need to know when we have to do that, if we start catching wind, if this is going to happen. Instead of you guys running back, whether it's me or another engineer, and saying, "Okay, I think this is going to happen, can you tell me real quick what we need to do to our infrastructure, are you ready?" Uh, no, I can't tell you real quick. You need to have that already documented, so you just flip through it and say, "Okay, yep, that's what's going to happen, recommendations are upgrade this eight inch to ten, change out pumps, we're good to go." If another heavy user on five twenty-two shows up, what does that mean? That's kind of what this study that you've already got the money set aside for, that's what that's going to provide for you, so that they have a roadmap of how to take care of this system, and come to you every year and say, "Okay, we need X amount of dollars." Why? Well, our CIP plan says that year five to ten, we're going to do these improvements. So, if we don't, understand that I'm going to put them, chalk them back, and next year I'm going to be asking for those and the next ones, because we, we skipped. It's a moving, living document, but it gives you a roadmap to kind of forge your way and know that this decision means this, and you can, you know, manage that based on the economy and how quickly you can raise taxes and things like that, instead of just saying, "I'm not even sure if that's a twelve inch right there, so what do we do?"
Gene?
I'm confused, really.
Well, where-
John says no, and each says yes.
Well, no, John didn't say no, he didn't need any more information.
I said, "No, let's go with what we're doing."
No, no, I said, I said I'm ready to move forward.
He does have concerns.
My concern is, I want to know if we can even do it. I have, still have reservations, if we can get enough water through two twelve inch lines, it's going to be fifty-fifths of sixes and fours and others, and that's where my issues are.
He's going to answer that question, would you do the study? Where are we moving forward with the permitting?
Well, I don't, I don't agree with taking the road and digging up the whole new road we're building right now, all the way through Riverton and that. No, I'm not, I'm not home for that. Nobody's proved to me that we've got a redundancy in the going's route. So, if you want an answer, it's either yes or no. I'm saying, find out what pipes we have and see if we can get the amount of water we need into twelve before I'm going to prove to dig up a new road that we have, we're just getting ready to finish this fall, which is out of Shenandoah and Riverton and that.
Joe? Do you have something to say?
Yeah, um, as staff has mentioned, we do have money appropriated, and the contract should be going up for council approval for the modeling right off the bat. So, you know, and that's, Steve says two to three month process. The PBR update and the submission to the VDA, so I don't see, we have the money, I have Chuck with staff to see, but if we have the money, we could go ahead and submit that. That gives us, if we don't even do that, at least doing the study, which we have to do anyway, that'll answer Gene's questions as well, that's two to three months. There's several things I want to follow up on from tonight's meeting. Number one is, I want to get Doug involved in the legalities of contract, to see can Dominion pull out, what is or what are the gal, want to get more into that, so I'm going to get-
We need to know what our liability is.
Right.
If they have an failure that we can't supply first.
So, I'm going to have Doug do that as well. And then, the biggest thing is the financing end of this as well, so, but we, we feel it's important to get moving on this, and so, we just, we wanted to get out here today and-
We've been saying that for years, and I think tonight we need to make that decision to move forward, and I heard council say move forward.
Well, Hollis, again, again, I don't want to be the stumbling block, but I did this for twenty-five years, and I know a little bit more about this system and probably all of the put-togethers. And I think we've got a problem, and, and I want to, where I say, "We're going to spend X number of dollars to do something, then later on we find we can't do it, it's kind of redundancy." I mean, I think it's kind of foolish to waste money for something we're not sure of. And I like to know whether we've got pipes enough to carry the water before we begin spending money on permitting and this, that, and whatever. I mean, I know three and a half million is not a lot of money, but again, it comes down to the point where we can't supply, the three and a half million dollars has, has no value. So, you know, that's, that's where I'm saying, I have a problem with doing the study. I just think that we're jumping the gun and getting permitting into things, but apparently, you don't have the plan, so you can't go even go to the DEQ or anywhere to begin with, so. Where are we at here? This is where I'm at. Where are we at? What are we going to talk about improvement? That's what I want to say. I want to know what we're doing, and I don't know right offhand right there.
My intentions for this meeting was to get council to at least decide if we're going to pursue this or not pursue it. This big question mark out there is what's really, is really bothering me and is bothering Dominion as well. So, basically, the objective tonight was to get back on council's radar, get everybody up to speed. We asked Steve to come here to get a, a better idea of what the financial impact is, because really, at the end of the day, it is part, partially financial impact that's going to impact this. So, that was the objective, and, and really, at the end of the day, I think the hydraulic evaluation will answer a lot of Gene's questions, and it's already slated, it's in the process being done, and it's two to three months.
So, that would all fall into line with?
If that's what we're discussing, I, I agree with doing it, but I'm not agreeing to the project yet. No, we haven't, we haven't had that part yet.
I don't think we're there, Gene. No, it's just, yeah, I just want to get some positive-
You've got to get this mapping first. But I, my confusion point, I didn't get a chance to bring it up, is, are you now saying that you want a twelve inch line across the river? Is that what I'm hearing you say, rather than that looping in-town? Now, that may be an alternative, ten years down the road-
Correct.
-you can have that map.
Yes.
I understand that. Now, in the last meeting, you didn't say anything about a twelve inch line across the river, dual system. You, what I saw you say was a looping system on the other side of the river.
No, I thought you said we was going to start at Seventeenth Street, and with a dual line, if one line's on, on the west side, you're going to go on the east side-
Correct.
-all the way through Riverton, across the second river, and then parallel to the line that's already there. That's what, that's what the initial thing we, we discussed, that's why I said I'm not for that, because I don't think we can get enough water and- that, because I don't think we can get enough water in those twelve, it's two twelve through that system that we have across the river.
Well, the other confusing point I had was you mentioned a six-inch across the river. I didn't understand that.
There's a four-inch that's been abandoned down below the, on the, would be on the east side, but that's been abandoned. That was put in back in eighteen, late eighteen-hundred, and it was abandoned, that many years ago.
And that's showing on the mapping, and we find out it's abandoned, it needs to come off because it's, it's a confusing part of that.
That's been abandoned, it's no longer in service, 'cause I did it, we had a break in it one time, went half-time, found it, we had divers, or my divers, but some of our men went in and ordered, and I did it, we repaired it. The only reason we knew it was a river, man fishing, I, when we went across it, he raised his boat up there, and he came in and told me about it, and then I checked, and what happened, I was impressed. Now, the only other water line is out on the, on the, on the west side, it's a twelve-inch line under the river, it was all the way through here.
John?
Just to clarify, we approached Dominion with four different design ideas, and they said only one of them would be suitable, and that's this one. So our options right now are, do we wanna move forward with this one, or do we wanna not move forward at all? There really isn't another option right now for another different system on the table.
There was a longer looping option, it was almost ten million dollars.
They don't wanna, out east, that went out over the other.
But their funding still stops at three point five, so now instead of two, the town would be coming up with.
Six.
With six and a half, and so that, that kind of ended that conversation.
Joe, I think we gotta move ahead with the project. Well, not the project, but let's move ahead, get some great studies.
The only impact that I think it has that the council may wanna take into account is if, if we do this, yes, there's, there's money already set aside that you're gonna see come across your, your table for approval for updating the mapping and doing the modeling and getting a CIP plan.
That's already in the budget.
It's already in the budget. Now, if the first part of that, I focus on answering these questions, I don't, I don't want you to spend part of the seventy-five thousand dollars that was, that was ready for the CIP plan on this budget, and I don't know how you guys work out that internally. Maybe we track how much time is spent focusing on moving this project alone, and you can get reimbursement for that part of the expense and your.
That will go, that question will go to Joe and BJ.
Okay, that's the only thing I wanna make sure we, we don't start muddying the water so much that it looks like the town CIP budget is paid.
Is that a correct statement, Joe?
Yeah, well, yeah, me, BJ, and we could yell on that.
I know, I've got what I need now. I know what I've gotta come back with for these two gentlemen at least.
Yes.
To get one fuzzy before we start.
Well, Bill's gonna take a tour with the actual, starting from the river, through the treatment plant, all the way out to the, to the tower of Guard Hill. He'll, he'll get it definitely good.
And we can talk about it, but it would might be helpful for me as the engineer to.
I mean, I don't have any millions of gallons that the system even holds within the piping itself, and I guess the study will show that, because if you have ten thousand miles of piping, you're gonna have ten thousand miles of water in that piping, and it's constantly moving one direction or another, so.
Yeah, without proper valves, Jimmy can tell you how much is in the line, 'cause it has to go all out before he can start working on this.
All right, Joe, sounds like we probably are moving ahead and look forward to coming back and giving us moving forward a little bit further.
All right, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Steve?
Okay, everybody adjusted to the next item. Continue discussion, proposed vacation town right-of-way is at fifteen twenty-one North Road Avenue, for the Butler request. We directed staff to bring us to a work session to bring us up to speed with vacation and the sale of property. So, Joe or Doug, I guess one of you two would take the lead on this?
Well, um.
Oh, you sent out an email, Doug sent out an email explaining the vacation process. I don't know, does that, does that answer everyone? I know Jacob was the.
I asked that this come back to work session before the second reunion adoption, and I'm a little disappointed that Jake couldn't be with us this evening, 'cause I know he wanted to go over it again. I've reviewed all the documentation again, it was just, I was a little disoriented in the public session because it had been so long since we'd seen this. I think that a lot of the points that Doug gave us in his memos kind of clarified a lot of it for me. And then I know that Councilman T. Wall made amendments to the motion, he explained that at the meeting too, so I'm okay with moving forward on this, unless anyone else has other questions and needs some clarification.
Is that, does anyone else have any other questions?
The only thing that I talked to, Mr. and Ms. Butler after the meeting, they had no problem with what I mentioned as far as they haven't had stipulated acts in the motion that they would like take those lots and reconfigure after they get the front, and so I still want that in the motion.
And that would go in indeed, Greg, Doug? And it makes things also, staff, per John and my request, met with Mr. Sloan at the end of the meeting, and, and he found out that this had nothing to do with the parcel behind him, and Joe, today you talked to him about vacating behind his house.
Yeah, I talked to him, talked to him on the phone, and actually not in person as well.
I mean, we, we have no clue who we talked to, and he did, and that's all behind this, but we have a clear path for him to move forward with. So if there's no other discussion on that, we'll move to the adoption of Llewellyn LLC Conservation easement. Now, attorney?
I'm gonna just check here, just follow this then. The, Llewellyns own some property down along the river, and they wanna put it in a conservation easement and have town hold easement under Virginia Open Space Land Act, and what that does is, in a conservation easement, it prohibits the Llewellyns from developing the land except for very restrictive uses, mainly arnie-type uses, recreational uses, that type of things, and they get a tax benefit from it, and town gets the, enforced the open space uses of that app, so it's semi-park land, really, along the river. The land is mostly, Jeremy can speak to this, but I expect a lot of it is either floodway or flood zone or.
In the flood plain?
Flood plain, is that correct?
All of the, the vast majority of the land north of the railroad is in the floodway or flood plain.
Yeah, so if you manage to remember these all.
Doug, just to put a little piece in there, the, the road that they keep talking about going from over near the old middle school, coming in the, in the rear of the property, I mean, that thing, is that doable? To access that, that piece of property that they're gonna keep? Or is that, doesn't have anything to do with, with the easement?
You're talking about?
There's a road that comes in, supposedly behind, all that?
That's just the driveway, I mean.
Is that part of the easement?
The easement does allow for one house to be built, so theoretically, if they could find a place there to build a house outside the flood plain, they could do it and use that as a driveway.
But the town wouldn't be required to finish out any street or any?
No, I'm sorry. The planning commission didn't have a problem with it, but they, Mr. Llewellyn has said that he will provide updated survey to council before it goes officially for a vote, so I would recommend holding off until we get that.
Absolutely.
And there's two small areas that planning commission wanted excluded, that was the alley behind the commercial properties, and the area right across from West Eighteenth Street, where there could be a potential entrance to a future commercial pad site.
Now, Eighteenth Street runs across the road and it just drops into a ravine?
Correct. Well, yeah, a small portion of that.
Well, it's a ravine, but that's still in at the bottom of the ravine.
They would fill in, theoretically, they would, they're working on plans to fill in part of that and create an entrance that would be directly across from West, West Eighteenth Street, but the other side would be.
See a little bit of look on your face there?
Well, I have questions, because number, number one is, I know that when we did the last one, is, are these, is this considered one conservation easement with all three parcels? Or is it three parcels, and we're saying he could build a building on all three of them, or one on all three of them combined?
The restrictions apply as all one piece of track, one piece of land, it's actually two parcels.
This is twenty acres, which combines a land along the river, on both sides of the five twenty-two, and the land in behind, over that across from the, from the bank there, and the service station that Dr. Seidel had an area office. Now, is this all the land that the Llewellyns own there, except the piece there on the front that faces five twenty-two, which would be the service station and the?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, that's, that's, yeah, that's the only land they own.
Two acres, two and a half?
The commercial, the total acreage is over forty, or about forty.
The piece that's not included.
He's just talking about that, yeah.
Just the two buildings, a building, it's the old station and the, the old Dr. Seidel had during.
Good area building.
And all of that, that's the only one that's.
I think it expands a little bit more to encompass some more land in the rear.
You can see the, the hashed areas on the map show the areas.
I see that, that's, that's, that's where I'm wondering if.
You know where they filled in all of the years when the town used to drop?
Yeah, we used to dump a lot of it.
Yeah, so they're all, that's gonna be included in the keep of, commercially, that won't be included in the.
We don't know how much that little section is.
That's what the survey will show, that he's, they're greenwashing it.
See, that's, that's that piece in behind the old, or the school's recreational piece. It's a little bit of land in there, and that's still part of that, that piece of real estate, that twenty-one A, one-two A, is that correct?
That's part of the conservation easement.
No, 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 you didn't answer my question. I understand he's gonna save the two buildings out on five twenty-two, but is there any gonna be any more land comes on the back of those properties, back to, to the school property? Is there any more land there that still belonged to Mr. Llewellyn?
No, other than that very large wooded area that's labeled as two A, lot two A.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that all the land that's owned by Mr. Llewellyn?
It's everything shown in yellow, it's everything he owns, and he doesn't, and he doesn't own anything else of the H's.
Everything he owns, with the exception of the two buildings out front on five twenty-two, and that alleyway, we used to call it the alleyway, they call Belmont on here, is the only thing left in all this real estate.
Correct.
And he can only build one building on any of those three parcels, is that correct?
One house, there may be versions for agricultural buildings.
Out, building, whatever. But I just wanna make sure that when we approve this, that we don't have a building on this one, one on this one, and one on this one.
Could that happen, Jeremy, they could build barn on one section, or another section build a house, or?
It just says structure, didn't say house.
Potentially barns, I'd have to read it, I think it still allows for agricultural buildings, sheds and barns, but just one house.
Okay, one house, one residence.
It's all, it's three parcels that are being added into one easement, correct? One conservation.
The restrictions apply to every.
The restriction applies to all three parcels at once.
As if they were one.
Right.
Okay, well, we'll wait till we get the survey back, Joe.
I, I got a survey late this afternoon, I haven't had a chance to read it.
We'll bring it back, no more questions if you'd like.
I'd like to see it, because I have a question in the back, if, if this isn't all the land, I wanna see what's left of the remainder of that property on this side of the river.
The river. Basically, it drops off at the edge where we got filled in, that's a civic policy. Or, yeah, yeah.
It's gotta be approved this way.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get the survey put out to the council, and we can bring it back. Joe, do we really need another work session to talk about? I mean, the council's satisfied with the new survey, I mean, it pretty much describes what all's gonna be in the conservation area and what's not. I think Mr. T. Wall would like to see himself what is not, and get a little clarification.
It's your call, we can, we can put it on a work session prior to, Doug, Doug was telling me that he has to have this completed by, by the end of September.
Guys, if you have any problems, anybody have any problem, move forward to vote on this. Doug?
I can move forward. I can get the plat to you in one.
Okay, Chris?
Move forward.
Gary? Bill? Move forward with it.
Yes, sir.
I have one question, Doug, is the survey that you were here seeing, is it different than what we had on our map?
Just what I looked at, it looked the same, but like I said, I just got it, and I really didn't have a chance to go with it for five, six, seven.
Because all here it shows, if you look at the map, it shows all the land behind the real estate that he's putting in that conservation is owned by the county warrant under, under the school system by the, by the school board.
And it joins, it joins the school board property, correct?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it goes all the way back up to where the old farmhouse used to sit. Okay.
I'll send it to you in the morning.
Thank you, Doug, just pop it to us, and thank you. All right, advancement of abandonment of right-of-way authorization, quick claim deed to William Biggs and William J. Biggs, William, William M. Biggs and William J. Biggs.
Mr. Biggs.
Resolutions and acceptance right-of-way for the deed previously adopted by the town council, and damages claim.
Put these together because they both kind of rose at the same time, involving the same people, and they, they brought these up to me at the same time, so I thought I'd bring them to you all at the same time. Back in two thousand and nine, there was a town council resolution which corrected two previous town council resolutions, that, it was basically a, a land exchange between two Mr.'s Biggs, where they wanted to exchange and acquire a unapproved portion of West Eighth Street, approximately nine thousand square feet, and they would pay thirty thousand dollars to the town for it, and then they would give to the town eighteen hundred and sixty square feet at the intersection of Shendoy Avenue and Kendrick Lane. That deal never actually happened because they were going to merge the property that they were acquired from the town with some property that they already had, and their attorney found that there was a title defect, and they had to go to court and straighten that out, and that apparently took some years to finally get that settled. In the meantime, the prior town attorney had resigned, and it just fell through the cracks. At about the same time, they had a claim against the town for about a little over, almost twenty-six hundred dollars in property damages to a fence and gate down in their old Virginia property down at the end of Kendrick Lane, and for installation of a storm sewer on, on their parking lot. And also, there were some trees that were removed, and they had a damages, they claimed for about twenty-five hundred dollars for that. The town used, apparently, subcontracted that out to Key Construction, and Key Construct, it took about a year for Key Construction to be notified that the damages had occurred, and Key Construction, in the meantime, went out of business, and they didn't pay it, and by the time BML was notified, the statute of limitations had expired, and so BML wouldn't pay for it, and so the bottom line is, the Biggses are claiming five thousand dollars for that, and technically, the statute of limitations has run on, on that, there's a five-year statute of limitations, and so if the town didn't wanna pay for it, the five year statute of limitations has run on it, but the Biggs are still making their claim for that, so the Biggs are still willing to pay the thirty thousand. So, the Biggies are still willing to pay the thirty thousand dollars on the first deal and go ahead with the landslide swap, but they are asking for the five thousand dollars for the damages claim and willing to offset those five thousand dollars instead of thirty thousand dollars. So I found out about it and I walked the property with BJ Biggs, the son of Billy Biggs, in August.
Doug, and you're, and I'm all for taking care of our citizens, but this thing with this five thousand dollars been going on since four years, five years from now from then? How long has this been going on?
Apparently, two thousand and ten.
So, it's been going on for seven years? They went through our loss prevention or, or was this where Key Construction, when they did the work, that they were liable for it?
They, they were, apparently, the town's contractor and they would've been liable if Key Construction, for whatever reason, didn't pay it, which they didn't. The town peers would've been liable, but it wasn't claimed against the town in the proper time. So technically, the town is not liable, it would just be a moral claim.
Yes, and that gets back to the thirty thousand, that would go into the general fund job for BJ?
Yes, the general fund.
And the five thousand would come out of that sale for it to the general fund? Or would that come out of a difference?
Yeah, it would come out of the sale, or it would maybe come out of the sale to a people.
I guess the next thing would be, would we do the five thousand or would we split the difference at twenty-five hundred? Gentlemen, Gene?
I remember very well, I know exactly what happened because I was mayor at the time. It was bits that they built between them and the parks, choke yard. And when Key Construction went out and put that new storm sewer in, they tore out one and tore a bunch of trees out as well that they had planted. And I thought it'd been settled, I knew the other park had it, but I thought that was it. And the other one, we agreed on that when I was in there as well, as far as the swapping of lanes and whatever. So, yeah, I'm in favor of doing that, doing it all really. I think it was a much, their fault is our fault and we should've followed up and we did.
So, your conclusion is thirty thousand less five?
Well, I, I don't know, I think, I think the, Billy and, you know, I feel that there's a little obligation on both sides, so I'd be more in favor of just taking the hand over. But I think they let the ball fall and we let the ball fall and nobody came in. I talked to Chip Wayne about it numerous times later and Chip said, I'll, I'll, we work, I'm working on it and that's all ever done, so.
Doug?
That's all I know there.
I'm fine with the thirty less five.
Chris?
Well, we're looking at twenty-seven.
Well, that's twenty-seven five, that's what you like, that's thirty thousand less two fifty. Yeah, twenty-five, okay.
Do you agree too, Gene?
That's what I'd say, because I mean, it was all dropped on the wayside below the park.
Phil?
Twenty-five hundred.
Okay, Doug, you got the marching orders, thirty thousand less twenty-five hundred. And that'll settle the claim and you'll get it. Take care.
Doug, Ennis, is Chip still working, doing the title or whatever on this?
I don't think so, he told me to negotiate directly with the, the Biggies, so I'm assuming he's not involved in it.
So, are, so you're negotiating with Phil or BJ? And then they put it on record after we do the title or like whatever?
I imagine I'll be actually recording it and all that stuff.
Doug, I did have one question, I apologize counsel for about memory. Is, is there a, or Gene, you may know, is there an alley that comes in off of Kendrick Lane that comes down by Ms. Timbers' house and it comes out? Or they're not gonna get that, that's still gonna be open?
I thought, no, that's the only thing was there was a part of Eighth Street that would've been extended back to where that alley and stuff stopped, that's, that's my understanding. I don't see a plat, so I don't know for sure. That was my understanding, that it was the Eighth, Eighth Street right-of-way that went back and stopped.
Yeah.
For the piece of real estate on the corner, so we could, we could widen that intersection later.
That's how it explained to me and how we walked it.
Yeah. Back in twelve, or not twelve, but back in oh-two-oh-three, when this started with, with the needing of that corner, future needing, that alley came up several times by Ms. Timbers. And we just wanna make sure that, that we still honor, we told her that that alley would still be a right-of-way for her to come in and exit out, so, okay.
Yeah, originally, that was, I remember that was discussed from my reading of the paperwork, but that was excluded.
Make sure you check the deed on that to make sure that's, if not, bring it back to council.
Is, is there gonna be a plat on that or?
I, I think we probably should get a plat or like have maybe Daryl Merchant draw a plat.
Yeah, I think we do too, because it should be something that's more visual than just stripped.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the problem, you go through it, everything was so kinda sketchy. And I think that's what got the, everybody confused and it's very confusing.
The driving point was the Apptech site, eventual needing all that turn radius to expand out for truck traffic and, and that's where it all started back in the day, so.
And, and we need it for our own purposes too, we have due to buy, really wanna widen, at least we all know where we're at.
Yeah, I think everybody, Biggies need to, like, we all need.
Yeah, they need that section, we need their section, so yeah, I give them a good trade, so. Okay, sounds good. Request to revise policy of town fixed video equipment in public areas, Joe?
Yes, Mayor and our council. Coming to my attention just over the past three, four months, I have, I have, I'm recommending a tweak in the policy a little bit in two areas. The first one is on line item number seven. And right now, it currently gives me the authority, gives the town manager the authority to give others as he thinks necessary permission to view video recordings. Currently, the policy states that no one can view a recording without a court order or without legitimate purchase purpose directly related to investigation by law enforcement or reported criminal incident. Way the policy's written, I'm not able to look at it for any prime example, something that happened a month ago, somebody drove away with the canister for the drive-through. Currently, with the policy, I can't just have IT look at it to see if we can look at our camera at drive-through and see who drove off with the canister. I'd have to initiate a.
Please fix it and bring it back to council, whatever.
Well, I got it here, this is just, just a little change in wording that will allow me to, to make that judgment call when we're dealing with cameras internally. And then the other revision is on number ten, which basically opens up the, right now it's drill specific on facility cameras. It specifically says water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, and energy services. I just wanted to put another thing in there for if we ever do need to put more cameras in our facilities, not for public area, but in our facilities.
That's not including gazebo?
That's not including the gazebo, I, I still think that still should reside in councils creed and per group, and so all I'm talking about with number ten is just being, having the option of being able to install more cameras at our facilities, inside our facilities.
Inside visitor's center.
Right, or wherever, wherever town business is conducted.
Do we have cameras surveillance of our booths that occasionally gets vandalized?
Well, the gazebo camera, I don't know how well that picks up over there. That there's a criminal, criminal investigation, that there's not a problem. It's like I say, it's just these little things where somebody says they dropped a payment in the night deposit box last night. Right now, I have no provisions of saying, well, let's go look at the video camera, see last night if anybody.
Right, yeah, you need to have that.
So, it's just a change of wording. And number seven is basically to say accept without. It's just like I say, it's just some changing to allow me some discretion and access videos that really are common sense. And, and maybe at the end of the day, maybe that was the true intention and it's an add instead of an war.
I would say that it probably was the intention of this policy I believe was amended on the floor by council when it was adopted last year, a little while.
Never told that.
I think that it's fairly common sense to give you more leeway to like make some decisions about security in town facilities in particular. I know that, that initial, the initial, uh, the initial desire by some on council was to prevent like any leeway when it came to any kind of video surveillance, uh, equipment. But I know that like we're, we're looking right now at making our buildings and facilities more secure and I don't think that that's.
I think, and as I stated the last time when we put the cameras back at the gazebo, that once the public goes onto a public area, that they're open. They've, they've already crossed that threshold. But I thought there was an issue with the booth not having a camera close by to where. Is that something that's, you're able to do already that you're able to install a camera?
No, that there, way this policy's written, something in a public area, meeting area, the council has to approve.
Was there a talk, is, is there an interest in putting another camera where the gazebo booth is?
I don't know, I'll have to see, I know that we did have some vandalism a while back, but I don't know if we encountered any.
You don't want any dark areas, I don't want any dark areas because that's where crime is gonna come. I mean, people see the cameras, they're very obvious.
Council approved new cameras and recording, which was taken in effect to, to help that gazebo area. So I don't think that was an issue right now.
That was a replacement of those, but anyway.
There's also the council's issue that we do not limit pure authority to install security cameras within town facilities. That was well-known. I wasn't on council that time, but I did sit pertaining to all these events. So that purview that you're asking for was well-understood. There was only one councilman or councilperson at the time that rejected any installation. But this whole thing was set so that security cameras could be placed in town facilities.
Yeah, and, and really, at the end of the day, it's the first one, number seven, that gives me the most heartburn because I, like, by this policy, I could not access those cameras to see who drove away with the canister. Luckily, they brought it back a couple hours ago. Took it for a little ride, but.
Anybody have any heartburn with moving forward, putting this on the agenda? Give Joe the authority that, staff that they need.
Is that an orange?
Just the policy. All right, moving on to liaison committee meeting items for September the twenty-first. Jennifer, who is up with the mayor?
Mr. Morrison.
Mr. Morrison. It will be September twenty-first at six o'clock. All right, who would you like to, who can fill in for Mr. Morrison?
Twenty-first Thursday.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first Thursday, that is a tree.
We've got a lot going on.
And that's over in the county tree, right?
That's in the county building, yes, there's, they're the hosts. I would like to have council permission to add one item to the meeting list and that would be a splash pad request from citizens that are coming out and voicing their opinion that they would like to see a splash pad somewhere down in the park system somewhere. And I'll start with it by putting it on the liaison and we'll bring it to the county's attention. I do understand that there has been some talk with Parks and Rec to do it. Splash pad, yeah, you know what a splash pad is?
I don't know, I don't know.
It's those, uh, it's those concrete.
Yeah, the dumpster.
Concrete platforms, just have little jets of water.
Okay, well, I just wanna know if that's what we're talking about. And many, many mothers and fathers, home fathers, bringing their children to these splash parks and they, you don't have to worry about them getting drowned because it's just little squirts of water.
Like in Winchester?
They have one in Winchester and it's very, very, very well-used and some citizens has asked that I bring it forward and that was the best way I thought of bringing it forward was to bring it forward to the counties, let them know that there is absolutely a lot of interest in this. Not that we would have anything to do with building or locating it or financing it, we're just gonna put some light on it, so. Let the council, if okay, we'll add that. Anything else the council would like to add? Chris, anything? All right, you hearing none?
Mr. Mayor?
What about removing?
Remove?
Oh, remove it.
I think two is completed.
Which one, Joe?
Oh, I was just, I did receive a letter today from Doug Stanley and with their request to be put on the agenda, phase two Happy Creek Road project update and the town building, maintenance code enforcement update. That's what their request to be put on the agenda.
Okay. I mean, I don't think anybody has any heartburn putting anything on, you know, it, it does bring it to the light for the county, county to talk about. John?
It may also be useful, like tonight's discussion, just to give them an update as well with the looping redundancy, if there's water line.
Absolutely, we can do that because that would.
It is gonna impact them too. To Councilman Tewol's point, I do believe the electrical outlets at the county soccerplex is complete and I think if memory serves, Mr. Stanley reported on that to us.
They're not complete yet.
They're not yet complete?
No, I mean, we are on our end, they haven't completed their end yet. We held up our lights and stuff.
So we can go there and brag that, that we, we did our end and now it's them?
Yeah, all we got left just to energize.
I got you. The teetering of the dogs, I think the council may declare that we're waiting on them to initiate their ordinance, we would mirror from them our ordinance.
And the county's already scheduled a public hearing for the town, scheduled for September nineteenth.
Leeches Run Parkway project, it's kinda done, but not because there's still issues with grasses and there's some other issues with the church.
Still a few.
Yeah, there's still some punctualist items.
I have a point of reference, IT federal project, that should be on there because the, it's back in Arizona and we don't have a date on that or when the expected time to come out. And that's important for both the county and the town.
Well, that would fall under Jennifer McDonald, she should be there to make the K property update.
It's back in our daily week though, she's just gonna toss it back over to us. If there's a holdup, I wanna, we aren't holding anything up.
Got you on that part, yeah, I think they were out there today with Ho getting rid of, what do you think, Jeremy? Are they, I know they were out there today removing some concrete and busting up some old roadways and it's a couple guys were doing some different things, are they moving along?
It is, uh, well, the, the IT federal site plan revision of the proffers will be coming forward to the planning commission, it's getting, right now, it's scheduled for October and then it'll become the council following that.
Understanding too, Joe, that the road design is important to IT because it has to mesh? So go ahead and put it on and we'll let you.
I want to put it on there.
You get with Jeremy to find out.
We'll provide, yeah, we'll put it on there and then we'll provide an update to discuss with county. I think it's perfect, Phil, good idea.
Yeah, absolutely, is that good, Phil?
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
Now, you can also attend too as a citizen.
I think I got something scheduled today.
Building inspection software, where did we leave off? We're still muddling in that, is that, Jeremy?
We have, I have a meeting with the county on Thursday. We're gonna kinda go over the project timeline for implementation of the online portal.
They've been going on five years?
Been a while. Well, it's been going on two years?
Well, we've been operational since last November on the system.
It hasn't got everything.
We haven't got to the point where we go to phase two, which was the online element, so that's what we're gonna be working on.
The K property update pretty much stays the same, we've had many, many people look at it, nobody's purchased it yet, but we'll leave it. I think Doug takes care of that, Doug take care of consideration of the joint towing board. They're moving forward on that, they're gonna take the reins on that wastewater.
That's also September nineteenth.
Yes, wastewater treatment plant, subject receiving facility, Joe, update them on that. Apptech property, Main Street extension, you'll update them on that, that still stays. Development review committee, Doug pretty much takes care of that, so. With our added one and their added two, that gives us thirteen items, so.
Did we have three, I'm sorry?
Oh, I was just gonna ask, Jennifer, what, what does that do to be completed, the subject treatment?
The full project's gonna be done in November, I don't have the exact date for the subject proceedings.
I know that people on the NASA, they're gonna be so bad. I know the people on Manassas Avenue, they're going to be so glad that people are out of there.
Yeah, I know.
And that's moving forward, we're going to have to start watching when we award contracts that we keep the residents in mind. Just like when we do the Chrysler Road Bridge, we're going to need to make sure we keep Mr. Lockhart in mind that we don't block his entrances and we try to work with his best opinion. Anything else, gentlemen, what you guys can think of?
I had splash pad, the water looping system, and then IT federal. Are you looping that with the Main Street or linking that with the Main Street?
No, the IT federal is separate.
So then we're adding three, looping system, IT federal, and splash pad.
Yes, yes, we are. And then the two that the county's adding. So that gives us the thirteen plus there two, so. Any discussion on anything that anybody would like to discuss, since it's not Monday night football?
I have one on the, on the, guys are, where, where do we stand? Bids already going back down?
The bids are out. They were due back on September eighth. But Madison and Craig contacted us and suggested that we postpone that due date for a couple weeks. But VDOT has released a ton of jobs and, and they're concerned that we may be in the same boat as we were last time with only one bid or no bids. So we're going to err on the caution, on the side of caution and we're going to postpone it for a couple more weeks where we can make sure we are good enough.
And then roll that over. Where do we stand on the trail of contracts?
The trail? I'm hoping to have the council approval for Lance's construction contract for that. If not, this coming Monday, following Monday.
Now, if that goes through, I haven't seen the contract. How long, how long is that scheduled?
I think it's a ninety-day process.
Ninety days.
Ninety days of construction.
A ninety day, if they don't get on its thing, they're not going to get any asphalt, they don't.
Oh, I know.
Tray, what's?
It's a.
So I just want to see where we're tracking that now.
I think it was one of those, we were kind of getting DEQ approval. Everything has just been moving along slowly. It was not, it wasn't a burning issue to get it in right of way.
Well, you know, once we got the contract from Lance, we had to back out some stuff that we wanted to do internally, try to keep costs down some. So, you know, there is that little bit of negotiation with Lance and then getting contract.
We were trying to coordinate with the bridge project also. Everything was trying to, the staff was trying to, to the least convenient the citizens that he could possibly do. Anything else, Bill?
I've got one more, Mr. Mayor. I, it was my impression we bought a new street sweeper. Does it have the capability to flush as well as clean? Because Manassas Avenue issue was flushing the mud off the street. And a sweeper is not going to sweep mud. It does not have the capabilities, so we're going to have this issue going forward.
Is there a sewer, sewer truck? How that?
Yeah, we, we used a sewer truck to, to clean that off. But far as wise as the capability to the new sweeper, I, I won't sit here and tell you, I, I don't know. I will have to follow up.
They don't have, I can tell you that, that sweepers don't have that. You got to have an actual flush truck as we used to have. And I guess it's gone to them, but.
That's how we, that's how we removed it over there with that flush truck. I mean, it's a little labor intense and it's messy.
But hopefully, once we clean it and get everything paid.
Well, if you get it to the gutter pay, then the sweeper can go by it.
Yeah, the sweeper. When are, when are we going to get our sweeper? We've been kind of looking at the old ones kind of.
It's here. They're in the process of getting it ready to go.
I was just trying to think ahead or what.
Right.
Sure. We've got a lot of construction going on.
Yeah, unfortunately, the wastewater treatment plant, which it, it's an unusual project.
This is where staff, Bill, and I totally agree with you because citizens should not run through a construction company's mud. Should not, that should not be an issue. Those trucks before they own, enter on town property, the tires and the wheels should be cleaned.
But that's something with the police department, if we decide to build it, whoever's doing our clerk of the works, he ought to be, or she ought to be, whoever's doing it, ought to be checking on those because that's part of the construction, construction. And the clerk of the work person should be making sure that those tires are clean before it goes out on the ground right away.
You know, we learn from our mistakes and one big mistake we made was Manassas Avenue. We went in there red clay and actually they're having an issue on, I believe it's Duncan. Someone went in, and I forgot to call you today about it. It was on Duncan Avenue, they went in and dug out a driveway, red clay. And every time it rains, the red clay's running down in front of these other people's homes. And they're tracking it into their homes now and they want to put it in for us, so.
Well, if they've done some digging, they should have had some maintenance controls.
Well, apparently the owner or whoever rented it, maybe, I don't know, that would be, and I'll, I'll get with you tomorrow, Jimmy.
That's a private issue.
Yeah.
About private property.
But being on private property, it cannot let it flow onto town property. Well, that's about. Anything else? Thank everyone for attending tonight. Councilman?